It's just a minute, but this, there it is right there on the front cover. Was this in there? I just thought you might get a check out.
This is a regular meeting of the Cuyahoga County Council for Tuesday, August 23rd, 2011, in the council chambers on the first floor of the Justice Center. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Ms. Simon?
Here.
Mr. Greenspan?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Mr. Germana?
Here.
Mr. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Schron?
Here.
Ms. Conwell?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Miss Conley?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to be held in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every and justice for all.
Silent meditation this evening. We'd like to ask everyone to make their own personal reflections and reflect on those items that are important to you. All right, item five on the agenda, is any public comment? Has anyone signed in for public comment?
Chair, no one from the public has signed in to address counsel.
I would like to point out for the public, for just prior to this meeting, we conducted a confirmation hearing for Mr. Richard Sensenbrenner for the position of Treasurer of Cuyahoga County, and those hearings will be available on the website if anyone would like to see them. Item nine, the minutes of the meeting of August 9th are in your packet. Is there, has everyone had an opportunity to read those? And if so, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Conwell and seconded by Mr. Schron. Is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the minutes are adopted. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Thank you very much, Madam President. First of all, I appreciate counsel's speedy consideration of our nomination of Mr. Sensenbrenner as county treasurer. I hope that you saw in him the qualities that we did when we chose him, which is that he's a dedicated public servant of longstanding and has the technical skills and the disposition, I think, to serve well in this very crucial position. So I appreciate your consideration of his nomination. There is an issue that came up yesterday that I wanted to mention to you that you may have seen, there was some media coverage about it, but I anticipate that there's a possibility anyway that it may be coming before counsel, and that is this issue of the voting by mail procedures when it comes to Cuyahoga County and the interactions that we're having, and our Board of Elections is having, with the state of Ohio on it. And if I could just summarize it quickly, there's a House bill that was passed, which is House Bill 194, which puts a number of restrictions, in my opinion, on the accessibility of voting. But one of the provisions that it contained was a provision restricting the ability of county boards of elections to provide absentee ballot applications and return envelopes with postage prepaid by the county, and providing those to all registered voters. This is a change that was made after the debacle that took place in many parts of the state in 2004, when there was high turnout in the presidential election, and Ohio made news, not in a very good way, about some of the chaos that happened at the polls, where you had people waiting until 10:00, 11:00, 12:00 o'clock at night, sometimes having to cast provisional ballots, and it was a real mess. You had long lines, and you had people really inconvenienced, and particularly in urban areas, which have a different set of challenges when it comes to accommodating voting than a rural county does. And you also have folks that have a different economic pressures on them in terms of even getting off work to be able to vote. And so it put a lot of stress on the system, and the best practice that was identified at the time was to try to encourage voting by mail. So that started to be implemented by our county Board of Election, and not just our county, there are a number of other counties across Ohio, mostly counties like Franklin and Hamilton County that also have urban areas where they had had those problems in 2004. So our county Board of Elections started to implement that, and they really fully implemented it in 2008, and it was an unqualified success. And it was approved and supported in a bipartisan fashion, in contrast to the way that unfortunately this has evolved this year. But I say it was an unqualified success because in the 2008 elections, you didn't have a repetition of the worst aspects of what happened in 2004. And you had the number of individuals who were voting by mail go up from an average, and I'm going to use round numbers here, but an average of around 10% to as much as 50%, sometimes over 50% in some local elections. And it wasn't really absentee voting, as those of us grew up with it, but it was another option of voting by mail. And it entailed some expense, but it also allowed the county Board of Elections to, it made it easier for them to consolidate the number of precincts that they had, which saved them over $1 million, I believe, eventually. Unfortunately, House Bill 194 banned this practice, and it's the first time that I can think of in modern history where we're actually taking a step backwards in terms of access to voting. And I do believe, in my opinion, it was motivated for partisan reasons. I can't imagine what an actual good public policy reason would be to ban this. Fortunately, there has been an attempt now to repeal 194 by referendum. The referendum process, and they have a few more weeks yet to collect signatures, the referendum process has frozen the implementation of House Bill 194 until the certification process is over. What that did was that created a window of opportunity then for county boards of elections because 190, House Bill 194 is not operational or effective, to proceed as they would otherwise have done if it hadn't been passed, because its passage has been placed on hold. Unfortunately, and not just in Cuyahoga County, but also in Hamilton County, it happened recently, now this process of voting by mail, which was always taken for granted, has now all of a sudden become a partisan issue. So in Hamilton County, their Board of Elections was deadlocked two to two between Republicans and Democrats as far as whether or not they would continue their voting by mail process. And in Cuyahoga County, unfortunately, we had a repetition of that yesterday, where again it was deadlocked two to two, Democrats versus Republicans, as far as maintaining this past practice, which was so effective. We sent a letter, as soon as we learned the vote happened yesterday morning, we sent a letter to Secretary of State Husted, asking him to break the deadlock, because as you know, in cases of a tie between members of the Board of Election, the Secretary of State can break a tie. So we had sent him a letter as soon as we learned about the deadlock, to cast a tie-breaking vote in favor of this process that, as I said, has been used successfully now for several years. He did break the deadlock, but he didn't do it in the way that we suggested. So he issued a ruling at about 4:30 yesterday that banned boards of election from following through with this vote by mail process. But the order that he issued, and I think his statutory authority, is narrowly construed to boards of election. It doesn't mean that other parties or other elements of government necessarily are restricted or are bound by his ruling. So, and as many of you know that have participated in campaigns, it doesn't prevent certainly a candidate who would happen to have hundreds of thousands of dollars, which is what it would take to do that, it wouldn't ban a private party or third party from mailing prepaid envelopes with absentee ballot applications to all registered voters if they happen to have the means to do that. The problem is that most campaigns don't have that ability to do it, and if they do it, they do it in a skewed and in a partisan way. And I've done it in previous campaigns, but I wasn't sending it, I wasn't sending those necessarily to Mr. Schron or Mr. Greenspan or Mr. Gallagher. So we could do it, private parties could do it, but they would be doing it in a partisan fashion. I'm having the Law Department review whether or not there are things that the county government could do to maintain this program. And we're also looking at whether legally we would be able to do it. And I'm also having, administratively, I'm having various departments through our procurement office and also our own Public Works Department with our print shop, looking at if we could do it. And I don't know the answer to that yet. I hope that we can do it. I actually hope that we don't have to do it, and I hope that some other party could step forward and do it. But I'm looking at what the options would be procedurally, legally, and administratively for us to do it. I think it is pure good government. It's just pure good government. And I just thought it was so regrettable that, for some reason, this has become a political football for reasons that I don't need to go into, but I think that's what's happening right now. If we made the decision that we could do it legally and that we thought that we could pull it off on a very tight timeline administratively, there might be a chance that we would have to get some type of funding transfer approval from this body. I don't know for certain that that would be necessary. I do want to say, in terms of the amount of money that it would cost, is that money has already been appropriated, it's already been appropriated to the Board of Elections. We've talked to the Board of Elections, that money has basically been sent there to them for this purpose. If they're not allowed to do it, they're just going to end up eventually sending it right back. So I'm not talking about spending additional funds. I'm talking about figuring out a way to spend the funds that we had already appropriated for the efficient and fair conducting of a local election. Now, one of the cynical arguments, I think, that has been advanced by some folks at the state level was that one of the reasons that they wanted to ban counties from doing this was because they wanted to save local counties' money. And that's probably the only thing I can think of that they've done in the last six months that would have saved us any money after cutting millions and millions and millions of dollars. They're going to tell us that in an effort for us to cut our own costs, we're going to be prevented from providing absentee ballots to people for the fair conduct of elections. One of the rights that I think we have as a county, and certainly as a chartered county, is to figure out what we want to spend our money on. And if we've already appropriated money for this function because we think that it is a necessary prerequisite to having a fair and efficient election, because we've seen what happens when we don't have this system in 2004, then that's a decision that we should be able to make. We'll find other ways, and we have found other ways, to save money without their help. I don't think that that was what the motivation behind this was. And I don't know if anybody really could say that with a straight face. So we're on a very tight deadline with this, because if we are going to go forward with it, there's a lot of work to be done. And we haven't made a final decision if we can do it, for all the reasons that I talked about legally and administratively. But it may necessitate, if we do go forward with it, asking the council to sit in a special session. And as soon as I have any more details on it, I will provide to the councils as soon as I possibly can.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you.
Madam President, out of order, if I would ask to comment on that, please. I echo the executive's views on this disenfranchisement, ultimate result of not sending out these by-mail ballots. I just want to say, if there's any legislation needed, I totally will sponsor it and ask council to come along with that. I see that there's going to be a disproportionate impact on senior citizens with this if it goes as the Secretary of State wants it to go. The senior citizens rely on this point in receiving their by-mail ballots and wait there at the kitchen table. I can just tell you, my grandmother will be at her table waiting for this to come and not know perhaps that it won't be coming. And I just think it's really going to impact the senior citizens. And so I just want to echo the executive, and I'm all for doing whatever's possible to make sure that these, the by-mail ballots go out.
Thank you. Item, is anything else, Mr. Fitzgerald?
No, ma'am.
Item eight, consideration of a motion of counsel for first reading adoption under suspension of the rules, Rule 9A and 12, 9D, I'm sorry, and 12A. Ms. Simon?
Madam President, thank you. I move that we suspend the rules.
A move by Ms. Simon, seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the rules are suspended as to item eight. Madam Clerk.
Motion number 2011-0043, a motion appointing individuals to serve on the Cuyahoga County Soldiers and Sailors Monument Board of Trustees and declaring the necessity that this motion become immediately effective. Burj Zakarian, Jerry Young, William Doyle, and John Silves.
Second.
All right, moved by Mr. Rogers and seconded by Ms. Conwell. Is there any discussion? I will say that Ms. Conwell's committee has worked very diligently on this matter. They spent a great deal of time going over applications, and these are their recommendations. I will note that Mr. Neil Evans has served on this commission for a number of years. He was very instrumental in the renovations to the monument, and he has performed yeoman service, and I'd like to thank him for his years of dedicated service. All right, is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. And with these four appointments, I believe that we have a full complement of persons for the Soldiers and Sailors Monument Board of Trustees. And this is one of those places that would encourage citizens watching this proceeding to visit the Soldiers and Sailors Monument. It's a very, very interesting place, and there are always people there to give you a tour, and it's one of our standing monuments, actually in the nation for Civil War monuments. And this anniversary of the Civil War, 150th anniversary, I would encourage as many people as possible to visit. All right, item nine, committee report and consideration of a motion of counsel for second reading under suspension of the rules, Rule 9D. Ms. Simon?
Madam President, I move that we suspend the rules.
Second.
A move by Ms. Simon and seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the rules are suspended as to item nine. Madam Clerk.
Motion number 2011-0041, a motion confirming the county executive's appointment of Paul Jursison to serve on the Cuyahoga County Corrections Planning Board and declaring the necessity that this motion become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Moved by Mr. Schron and seconded by Ms. Conwell. Is there any discussion? Is Mr. Jursison here? All right, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, and we congratulate Mr. Jursison. Item 10, consideration of a resolution of counsel for first reading, adoption, suspension of the rules, Rule 9A and 9D and 12A. Ms. Simon?
Madam President, I move that we suspend the rules.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Simon and seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the rules are suspended.
Resolution number 2011-0262, a resolution recognizing the creation of the Courthouse Centennial Committee and supporting the committee's plans to seek grants and other funding to conduct a year-long series of events commemorating the 100th birthday of the Lakeside Courthouse in 2012 and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
So who moved it?
Greenspan.
Greenspan. Moved by Mr. Greenspan and seconded by Ms. Conwell. I've been on this committee, working with Judge First, a number of people, recognizing the anniversary of the Lakeside Courthouse. We have a picture up on the screen. We are considering a number of different events, and we actually would appreciate any public comment if anyone has any ideas. We'd appreciate if you have pictures of at the courthouse, you know, you getting adopted or getting married or some special event there. And we will be doing a series of events over during 2012 to commemorate this historic event. Our courthouse is actually one of the most beautiful courthouses in the state of Ohio, and we are looking forward to the celebration. All right, any other comments?
Yes. This may seem picky, but it does say birthday, and it probably should say anniversary.
Okay.
I move that in the resolution where it says 100th birthday, it be changed to anniversary.
All right, can we just do that? Do you want to take a vote on it? We'll just change it on the resolution.
Then no cake.
Well, that's true. That's true.
Madam President?
Yes.
I just can't help saying this. This is where the divorce court is in Cuyahoga County, so there might be some actually happy divorcees who can attest, you know, it's not always so.
I mean, there's divorces, there is adoptions, you know, you get probate, Court of Appeals, you know.
I got a couple of days of stories I can give you.
So anyway, is there any discussion on this? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. We'll be forwarding that to Judge First, and we look forward to a number of upcoming events. All right, item 11, consideration of ordinance of counsel for first reading and referral to committee. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 2011-0041, an ordinance authorizing, enacting, and designating an additional 5% of all collections of delinquent real property, personal property, and manufactured and mobile home taxes and assessments to be deposited in the Delinquent Tax and Assessment Collection Fund for the use of and appropriating such amount to the use of the Cuyahoga County Land Reutilization Corporation and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective. Additionally, Mr. Rogers has requested that he also be a sponsor of this item.
Is it moved? Who referred me? I'm sorry.
The committee, Ms. Simon.
All right, yes, goes to the Finance Committee. All right, item 0042.
Ordinance number 2011-0042, an ordinance providing for adoption of a policy granting health benefits to domestic partners of county employees and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
In this matter, we refer to the Human Resource Committee and the Justice Affairs Committee, and I believe that Ms. Simon and Ms. Conwell have worked out some dates where they can have a joint hearing or hearings before both of their committees.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would ask if my name could be added as a co-sponsor.
Okay.
Madam President.
Yes. And I would also like my name added.
I'd like my name added as well.
All right, so we have Simon, Miller, Rogers, Conley, Brady, anybody else? And Conwell. All right, item 12, I don't know why I'm off with these numbers tonight. Item 12, committee report and consideration of ordinance of counsel for second reading.
Ordinance number 2011-0013, an ordinance providing for adoption of an open meetings policy for Cuyahoga County and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective. Madam Chair, after reviewing the council's rules and the Roberts rules, it appears to me that no action is required by council in order to move the next two items to the next agenda for a third reading, so I request that you just refer them for a third reading.
All right. And then let's go on to 0036, I believe there is an amendment to that.
Ordinance number 2011-0036, an ordinance establishing the procedure for adopting a biannual operating budget and capital improvements plan with an annual update and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
Madam President.
Yes.
Madam President, this will constitute the second reading of the two-year budget ordinance. A couple of issues came up in Finance Committee, and as a result, an amendment was prepared, and so I would like to move the amendment that you have distributed on your desk. And basically, the amendment does two things. The first is that it clarifies that this new process will include a two-year appropriation process and not just a two-year budget plan. And the second thing is that it clarifies that boards and commissions and other entities required by the state law to submit annual budgets will continue to do so, and we would use their annual budgets as part of our annual update process in this system. This amendment was prepared with the assistance of both Director Rubino and Director McLoughlin has their approval, so I ask for the support of the amendment.
I do have a second.
Second.
It says moved by Mr. Miller and seconded by Mr. Schron on the amendment. Is there any discussion on the motion to amend or the amendment? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the ordinance will be so amended, and this also will be on for third reading, so no action will be taken, it will be on for third reading at the next meeting of September the 13th. All right, item 13, committee report and consideration of an ordinance for second reading and referral to committee.
Ordinance number 2011-0039, an ordinance establishing procedures governing the use by the county of alternate construction project delivery methods, including construction manager-at-risk, design-build, and general contracting project delivery methods for public construction projects and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
On this matter, we'll refer back to the Economic Development Committee under Mr. Schron.
That's correct. There'll be a hearing on the 12th, I think, Monday, the 12th, for anybody interested, and we would encourage anybody who wants to participate to be there present.
Thank you. Item 14, consideration of a resolution for first reading adoption under suspension of the rules, Rule 9D and 12A. Ms. Simon?
President, I move we suspend the rules.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Simon and seconded by Mr. Gallagher for suspension of the rules. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Item 0263.
Resolution number 2011-0263, a resolution amending the 2011 annual appropriation measure by providing for additional fiscal appropriations from the General Fund and other funding sources for appropriation transfers between budget accounts and for cash transfers between budgetary funds in order to meet the budgetary needs of various county departments, offices, and agencies, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Moved by Mr. Miller and seconded by Ms. Conwell. Is there any discussion, any questions on any items?
Madam President.
Yes.
It's very, very routine, mostly things around implementing funding for grants that we've received. It does include $50,000 appropriation for the council redistricting process, which I've seen this before, and that's not much money compared to what usually needs to be spent on that.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item 15, consideration of resolutions for first reading and referral to committee. Item 0264.
Resolution number 2011-0264, resolution amending resolution number R. 2011-0234 dated July 26, 2011, which authorized an award on requisition number 19343 to First Energy Solutions in the amount of $5,500,000. For the Solutions in the amount of $5,500,000 for the purchase of electric utility services for county-owned facilities by changing the time period from June 1, 2011 through May 31, 2012, to September 1, 2011 through August 31, 2013, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
If this matter referred to the Public Works Committee?
Resolution number 2011-0265, a resolution authorizing a Neighborhood Stabilization Program III loan in the amount not to exceed $637,884 to Piritus Avenue Associates Limited Partnership for the Hawks Landing Project located at 14610 Piritus Avenue, Cleveland, authorizing the Department of Development Deputy Chief or Director to execute all documents required in connection with said loan on behalf of the county executive, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
On this matter, refer to the Economic Development Committee?
Resolution number 2011-0266, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into an amendment to agreement number AG-090,007 with City of Cleveland for an automated fingerprint identification system and mobile data needs assessment for Ohio Homeland Security Region Two in connection with the fiscal year 2007 Law Enforcement Terrorism Prevention Program for the period July 1, 2007 through March 1, 2010, to extend the time period to December 30, 2010, and for additional funds in the amount of $730,408.94, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
On this matter, refer to the Public Safety Committee?
Resolution number 2011-0267, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into an agreement with City of Cleveland in the amount not to exceed $630,558.75 for reimbursement of eligible expenses in connection with the fiscal year 2009 State Homeland Security Program Law Enforcement for the period August 1, 2009 through April 30, 2012.
On this matter, refer to the Public Safety Committee? Item 16, committee reports and consideration of resolutions for second reading adoption under suspension of Rule 9D. Ms. Simon.
Madam, excuse me, Madam Chair, if I may, prior to this, the committee in the Department of Development is recommending that item number 16J, which is resolution 0256, and item 16K, which is resolution 0257, be postponed and be placed on a future council agenda.
Okay, so these items are withdrawn. All right, Ms. Simon.
Madam President, I move we suspend the rules.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Simon, seconded by Mr. Gallagher, suspend the rules, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, the rules are suspended.
Resolution number 2011-0247, a resolution declaring that public convenience and welfare requires repair and resurfacing of Madison Avenue from Riverside Drive to West 117th Street in the city of Lakewood. Total estimated construction cost $2,600,000, and authorizing the county executive to enter into an agreement of cooperation with City of Lakewood in connection with said project.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Schron and seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Is there any discussion on this item? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution is adopted. Item 0248.
Resolution number 2011-0248, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into an agreement in an amount equal to the approved appraisal fair market value estimate of $53,710 for settlement of property rights in connection with replacement of Bel Air Road Bridge Number 24 over Big Creek in the city of Cleveland and Village of Lyndale for parcel numbers 3S, which is a permanent sewer easement, and 3T, which is a temporary easement, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Moved by Mr. Rogers and seconded by Ms. Conwell. Is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution is adopted. 0249.
Resolution number 2011-0249, a resolution authorizing the county executive to approve an additional settlement in the amount of $200 in connection with the appropriation of property rights for the grading, draining, and paving of Bainbridge Road from Sam Center Road to the Solon East Corporation Line in the city of Solon for parcel number 123T, which is a temporary easement, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Moved by Mr. Schron and seconded, is that by Ms. Simon? All right, any discussion? Yes.
Madam Chair, this and a number of resolutions following were discussed individually and thoroughly in the Public Works, and this has to do with after a project is being reevaluated because there may be something like shrubbery or some other factors that someone wanted to have reappraised, so these were all explained to us, and some of them are pretty small, but I just wanted to let you know that we went through each one of these.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
I would add that the contract and procurement ordinance was recently amended so that these kind of things don't have to come to the full council, but these items were already in the process when that occurred, so that's why they're here.
Yeah, I thought these were, we had seen the last of those at the last meeting, so this probably will be the last time we'll have these small items. All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, resolution adopted. 0250.
Resolution number 2011-0250, a resolution authorizing the county executive to approve an additional settlement in the amount of $8,600 in connection with the appropriation of property rights for the grading, draining, and paving of Bainbridge Road from Sam Center Road to the Solon East Corporation Line in the city of Solon for parcel number 58T, a temporary easement, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Simon, seconded by Mr. Jones. All right, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, resolution is adopted. 0251.
Resolution number 2011-0251, a resolution authorizing the county executive to approve an additional settlement in the amount of $250 in connection with the appropriation of property rights for the grading, draining, and paving of Bainbridge Road from Sam Center Road to the Solon East Corporation Line in the city of Solon for parcel number 75T, a temporary easement, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Moved by Mr. Jones and seconded by Ms. Conwell. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, resolution is adopted. 0252.
Resolution number 2011-0252, a resolution authorizing the county executive to approve an additional settlement in the amount of $590 in connection with the appropriation of property rights for the grading, draining, and paving of Bainbridge Road from Sam Center Road to the Solon East Corporation Line in the city of Solon for parcel number 59T, a temporary easement, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Second. Moved by Mr. Jones and seconded by Ms. Simon. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item 0253.
Resolution number 2011-0253, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into real estate agreement number 24475 with Ohio Department of Transportation in the amount of $200,000 for partial reimbursement of right-of-way acquisition costs in connection with reconstruction of Ridge Road from Interstate 480 to Memphis Avenue in the city of Brooklyn.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Who moved the motion?
Mr. Germana.
All right, moved by Mr. Germana and seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item 0254.
Resolution number 2011-0254, a resolution establishing charges payable for connection to the county sanitary sewerage system in a portion of County Sewer District Number 13 in the city of Brexville, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Moved by Mr. Jones, seconded by Ms. Conwell. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. 0255.
Resolution number 2011-0255, a resolution establishing a capital cost surcharge for construction of a pump station and sanitary sewer lines in Echo Hills subdivision located in County Sewer District Number 13 in the city of Brexville, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Schron, seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Now we go to 0258? Is that the right one?
Yes.
Okay.
Resolution number 2011-0258, a resolution authorizing an award on requisition number 20109 to Tri-More Corporation in the amount of $820,360 for the Year Two Pavement Maintenance Program, Apron A1B Reconstruction and Apron A2CD1 Rehabilitation for the period August 9, 2011 through June 6, 2012, authorizing the county executive to enter into a contract consistent with said award, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Schron, seconded by Mr. Rogers. Any discussion? This is for the county airport, is that right? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item 17, consideration of an ordinance for first reading and referral to committee.
Ordinance number 2011-0043, an ordinance providing for adoption of the Cuyahoga County Civil Service Pay Equity Plan and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
If this matter referred to the Human Resources Committee? Item 18, committee report and consideration of ordinances for second reading.
Madam Chair, the chairperson of the Human Resources Committee has requested that both of these be referred back to committee after they're read into the record for the second reading.
Okay, so there's no action, that this be referred back to the committee?
Right, after I read them. Ordinance number 2011-0034, an ordinance providing for adoption of administrative rules for the Cuyahoga County Human Resource Commission and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective. An ordinance number 2011-0038, an ordinance providing for adoption of various changes to the Cuyahoga County Non-Bargaining Classification Plan and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
All right, so there's no action, we refer this back to the committee. We now, item 19 for miscellaneous committee reports. Before we go to those, I would like to make several announcements lest I forget. Mr. Germana, would you like to announce your forum for the 15th of September?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Intergovernmental Relations and Collaboration Committee will be hosting the Northeast Ohio City Councils Association. This is on a Thursday night at 7:00 in the council chambers. Most city councils in the county either have their council meetings on Mondays or Tuesdays, so this, having it on a Thursday, will give the council members the opportunity to attend. The committee will be hosting it, and it's invited to all city council members, whether they're members of the association or not.
And also members of the public, if you're interested.
Absolutely.
And then also will be live streamed.
It'll be live streamed.
Tomorrow, August 24th, there will be two forums held by the redistricting committee. They will both be held at Cleveland State. These are public meetings to discuss the proposed county and district boundaries. The meetings will be held, one at 10:00 and one at 5:30 in the, is it Dively Auditorium, which is located at Cleveland State, Cleveland College of Urban Affairs, and that's at 1717 Euclid. You can also go to the council's website and click on County Districting Commission to provide the public with any input on those matters. I'd also like to announce that on September 11th, the Cleveland Orchestra is playing a free outdoor concert to mark the 10th anniversary of the September 11 terrorist attack. The tribute concert is open for the afternoon of Sunday, September 11th, at Downtown Public Square, and this is a free event. As part of the concert, there will be a giant screen filled with images of peace. The community is invited to submit original photographs and artworks of people, places, imagery, or anything else that communicates a personal message of peace. The images of peace will be shown before the 9/11 concert and will also be posted on the Cleveland Orchestra blog. Photos must be 1 MB, 2, 3 MB in size and can be emailed along with the submitter's name, and you can send it to peace@clevelandorchestra.com. The pre-concert tribute program begins at 2:30 and includes firefighters memorial pipes and drums, honor guards for Cleveland Safety Forces, and Armed Services Division, procession of the Western Reserve Fire Museum, local safety forces, and three New York City fire trucks present at Ground Zero. There'll be poetry readings and, of course, the images of the peace, and the orchestra will start at 5:00. And I believe there is a Browns game that day, so we are urging everyone to take public transportation. I live on the Rapids, so it'll be easier for me, but I would urge everyone to take public transportation because parking certainly will be at a premium, and they will all be there to see the Browns win the game also. We will be having a work session on September 13th to discuss proposed educational programs in connection with a scholarship program that the council is mandated to institute, and on September 13th, we'll have a number of speakers, and once again, we entertain any ideas from the public regarding that scholarship fund. Our next regular meeting is, we have a special meeting on August 29th at 4:00 here in council chambers. That will be for confirmation hearing, confirmation of Mr. Stinson Brenner, our treasurer, and I think we may have another several items. Our next regular meeting will be on September 13th, where we also will be having, as I said, our educational forum and our regular meeting at 6:00. Are there any other? Oh, go ahead. Mr. Gallagher, you want to make that announcement?
Tomorrow at 10:30 at the fairgrounds, we'll have a groundbreaking for the wind turbine out there, so all are welcome.
All right, are there any other miscellaneous committee reports? Mr. Miller.
Madam Chair, the Finance and Budgeting Committee will meet next Monday, the 29th. The time has been moved back one hour from the usual time, and it will be at 2:00 to align with the special meeting that's at 4:00, and there's going to be one main item on the agenda, which is the land bank ordinance. It's a complex piece of legislation, and we're going to have representatives from the land bank present, and we're going to be able to get into it in detail and get a good understanding of that legislation. Thank you.
Mr. Time.
Monday at 2:00.
Monday, the 29th.
Monday, the 29th, at 2:00.
Okay. Mr. Brady?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. The Health and Human Services Committee will meet on Thursday, September 1st, to take up ordinances and resolutions that have been introduced in the month of August.
Any others? Any other miscellaneous business?
President, the Public Works Committee meeting will meet this coming Thursday. We have moved our time from over the past few weeks, but we will meet at our regular time of 11:00 a.m. this coming Thursday.
Any other miscellaneous business? Mr. Greenspan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Unrelated to council, there is a public safety softball tournament benefiting CERT in North Olmsted this weekend, and I would encourage my colleagues to attend. First game is Friday night, game's all day Saturday, championship game Sunday at 4:00 p.m.
Will it be at some, like, 6:00 in the morning, like, the last event you were...
No, no, this is a benefit softball tournament, not a preparedness disaster program.
Okay. Anything further? Any comment, any public comment? Anyone signed in to make public comment? No one signed in? All right, anything else for the good of the order? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, stand adjourned.
I will not be at the mic.